This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission for January 3, 2008. Beverly Henderson, Service Safety Director, is not here, but we do -- all the other members are present, so we do have a forum. If you plan to make any statement, we take sworn or affirm that you will tell the truth. If you plan to say something, withstand and raise your hand. Do you affirm that you will tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Or swear, if you want to swear. I like the swearing part. Hi. Has everybody signed in? No. Have they all signed in? Are you signing them in?
I've got the names here.
Okay. We have one case today. It's number 0801, Penderford Limited, 176 Mill Street. And it's a proposal to demolish an existing building and construct a four-unit building. And there is some question about setback and trees and all that sort of thing. Is there anyone here who wishes to tell us about it? And identify yourself.
My name is Caroline Thomason. I'm here to represent Penderford Limited. As you mentioned, we've already gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we received a unanimous vote for the variance with the setbacks. I'm here today to be the very first Site One -- Title 41 Site Plan approval. It's a distinct honor to be part of this. The proposed project, which is located at 176 Mill Street, will transform the end of Mill Street with a well-planned community and concert with the vision of the City of Athens Comprehensive Plan. This uniquely comprehensive community was first started with a commitment to safety, adequate parking, green space, and landscaping. It was developed, planned, and will be built by the local Athens community. The result is a state-of-the-art home with fire protection, green spaces developed with the Tree Commission, and more parking than is required by code. We were honored by unanimous vote of approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals and look forward to creating more student bedrooms and a student housing area. The City of Athens Comprehensive Plan targets the Mill Street neighborhood for intensive redevelopment with a dense student population, in turn helping to reduce the pressures on the local communities and homeowners.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions?
So, I have a question. So, the only requirement really for the zoning board was setbacks, in terms of side setback and rear setback?
Correct.
And you said there's an excess of parking, that's two spaces extra, is that it?
Correct.
And I notice you have schematics for the first floor and the second floor.
Yes.
I assume the parking is in the ground floor, is that how it works?
It is. Those are also available if...
We do have a schematic, but I just wanted, for nomenclature purposes, is ground is not first?
Yes, it is on the ground floor, which then gets the first level way out of the floodplain zone.
And that's the intention.
Mm-hmm.
And the parking is shared between the two lots, the lot in between? No, wait a second, there's parking on the other side, next to it, to the west of it. That's for the other apartments?
It is a combined lot at this point.
Okay.
So, all the parking for the unit is located on the lot that it will sit on.
There won't be any parking left after this goes up on the lot next? This will cover both the house and the empty lot next to the parking lot in between the two houses?
No, there's 17 feet between that house and then the parking that is on the left side of the lot, and then you have 174 Mill, which sits on the corner of Mill and Elliott.
And it uses the remain...
174 Mill has its own parking on, is its own lot. Yes.
Okay.
And, trying to find it here. It looks like you did a lot of work here. All the different sections are here, from what I can tell. Title 41.
I've tried, thank you.
And I know some are pertinent, some aren't. The landscaping plan has been submitted to the pre-commission, or does it tonight?
Their meeting is on the 7th. I've been working, if you will, I have, if you allow me, I do have more information about, in more detail, the landscaping plan, of what you will find there also. I'm working with a local planner, Stan Vichner, that does all of the traffic areas in the City of Athens, and he is our planter. If you will permit me. So, this is simply just some of the trees and ideas of the exact placement. It is his handwriting. There's two pages here. This, with much other consideration from the Tree Commission, will be finalized on their meeting on the 7th.
Let's see, there was one other question. I'm trying to find the section here. Let me see if I can locate it. Gee. I noticed, I think it's G, that's why I had to look it up, because it's all new to me as well. Your plan review has only one dumpster in place, is that what I'm looking at there?
Yes.
Parking, and that's all the way back to your, another, and Elliott, if I'm reading correctly?
That would be in the rear 6 Elliott.
Okay.
I believe it was about two years ago when I worked with Ray Hazlitt to establish large-scale dumpsters in vicinities near our properties so that we could step away from the weekly curb site service. We believed that the trash just wasn't getting to the curb, and this was one attempt to give them another option so that it didn't accumulate and they had a place to place it. This dumpster is monitored and is sometimes during the needed area, needed times, move in, move out. It is emptied more than once a week when needed.
Okay.
I don't know the exact scale of it, but it's very, very large.
And this services, will service 176 Mill? And what other apartments besides that? What other...
Do you have the drawing from G?
Yes. So, it's 174, 2, 4, 6.
All the occupants of these houses have the option to use that dumpster if they prefer, instead of waiting for the weekly curb site service. Recycling still must be picked up weekly on the curb, however.
Okay. That's what I went for. And it's adequate, obviously, at this point.
It has been very sufficiently adequate. Like I said, I work very closely with, with, well, it's not Ray anymore, and it wasn't...
Probably Michael Guzman. Saltaway Inspector now.
Mr. Bales also.
Roger Bales.
Oh, Roger Bales.
Roger Bales, thank you. Thank you. And making sure that we don't have any overflow, absolutely. And I may say, it's been very, very successful for us. I do recommend it to other property managers. It's a wonderful opportunity for, just as the crews going around also, we just carry trash bags and use our local dumpsters, so it's been wonderful.
Okay.
What the, I have to get this set in my mind. When they park, what side of the building will they come out of parking?
Both.
Both sides? So, they'll be parking on both sides on the first level?
Yes, ma'am.
And then behind it too, right?
And behind it too?
It does continue on behind, behind the building, yes. And that is existing parking, it's already there, no change to that area at all.
But are there drives on both sides? Will have to put a drive for them to drive through? I was down there and looked at that house, but I can't remember what the one side looked like.
The drives are already existing.
In there, okay. The one looked, I assumed the one was part of Sterling Engines or whatever that is down there.
Sterling Technology.
Sterling Technology.
You do access off the alley there, yes.
Yeah, that's where you...
Mm-hmm.
Is there room in there to put any kind of planning to divide that up? Because it's so close, it seems so close to the manufacturing area to me, but the...
The alley is a 20-foot alley, so there is a great, great bit of space there. The idea is simply to turn off the alley into the parking, as currently done, and is currently done by, you know, the other properties down through there. We will concentrate our landscaping, if you refer back to the landscaping plan, which I believe, off the top of my head, Section O, that I just handed to you, also, that we will concentrate heavily in the front. We are planning for also seasonal varieties, so that you have perennials, there's something there to see in the spring before the trees bloom. We have great desire to make the curb appeal much more than what you see in those not-great pictures that I had to offer for you. And they're not great.
Well, my only thing, if I were living in that apartment, the way it seems to be set up, I would sort of like the factories over there, the offices of those organizations to be blocked out so I didn't have to look at them when I looked out my window. I like to look nice on the street where it faces, but if I were living in it, I would like both sides so that I didn't have to look at things like that.
Currently, the view is open, so there's, there won't be much change from what is current to what is proposed.
Well, I can see that there isn't anything on there. There is a tree there, that tree will come out of there?
We would like it to save the tree.
If you can.
If we can.
Big tree.
It's a very big tree. But we also will be planting many other trees in addition to what is currently there.
I'm looking at, trying to find notation about the present occupancy. It's a duplex right now, so the total number is...
10.
10.
Curious pictures?
Mm-hmm.
Part A and B, yes.
They're all finding what you need. There are lots of pieces of paper here involving all the...
It's a very comprehensive plan, that's correct.
And this is essentially the reason why the Site Plan Review is put in place, so we have all the information.
Have all the information.
You just have to absorb it quickly.
Read it fast. No. Well, it's a good idea to have all this sort of thing, because yours can be the standard by which everybody else has to operate now.
Is it in the 100-year floodplain?
It is, and that is the reason to locate the parking underneath.
Because I've got the flood insurance map, but it doesn't say what the difference shading is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I think the darker is 100 and the lighter is 500.
It gets hard when you're dealing with lots of black and white there.
Okay, so I think this fringe right here is 500, and this going towards the river is 500. And it's dead in the middle of the 100. And the heating systems, all the electrics that are going to be above on the first floor, above the 100?
Yes.
Well, it's a nice design for accommodating that location in the floodplain and so on. I like the landscaping plan, too.
Thank you.
Although I'm sure the pre-commission will have some advice on what exactly type cul-de-sac it is here, Latin names and all.
Yes. I think some of them are already in there. Our planner, Stan Vichner, has, in the evolution of what you currently see, already been working with Alvy McWilliams. So, we're excited on the 7th to be able to sit down with all of them, and we're very optimistic that with the current work that's already gone into it, very few suggestions probably are going to be necessary, but we will, we will come away with a very comprehensive I don't want to stick my foot in my mouth and say extensive landscaping, but off the record, that is the goal.
Now, the bedrooms, it looks, from the floor plan, as though the apartments have three bedrooms?
There are three upstairs, and there would be one located downstairs. Gives us the option to rent as a three- or four-bedroom unit.
This vinyl siding on this, what that is? The siding planned on this, is it vinyl or some such thing?
Yes. Yeah, that's what everybody does.
Looking for the first visit.
These little things, see, these things here, I can't look at these, they make me dizzy.
Well, those are screen prints of the GIS from the...
I know, but I can't look at it. I'm sorry. It is right up next to the manufacturing.
I'm still having trouble interpreting the floor plans. This is basically is four apartments, and each has an upstairs and a downstairs?
Yes.
And it'll be possible to rent just the downstairs or to rent just the upstairs?
No.
No.
It, may I approach you? It may be.
Essentially, it repeats itself.
Okay.
So, this would be the first floor of one unit, and this would be the second floor of one unit. The den or the study would potentially be a fourth bedroom, giving all units to be two floors therefore. That's why we're calling them townhouses. And you would either have three bedrooms upstairs, or three bedrooms upstairs with a bed, and then the fourth bedroom downstairs.
Okay.
But it's the, it's the same thing for...
So, everybody uses the kitchen and living room?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then if these three people want to pay more, they have that be as study?
It would, if your group had three people, then you would consider the option of the three-bedroom. If your group had four bedrooms, then living there is still an optional.
Yeah.
We have adequate parking for all of you to rent as four bedrooms.
But it'd be more for the, if you only take three, more expensive to rent it if you only have three bedrooms, three people?
Quite possible.
And there's both exterior and interior stairwells, is that what I'm looking at? Is this stairwell in the middle?
Yes, well, there's a staircase inside that would take you to the second floor.
Okay.
And then they enter from outside, from the porches.
And, so the question, if they wanted to put a grill someplace, who would they put their little...
They would put a barbecue grill.
Okay.
If, if there was a barbecue grill, it would absolutely be required to be out, basically out in the parking area.
Okay. I'm just, you know, going to go see...
Can't be, well, they'll put it on the porches or underneath, is what they want to do.
Yeah, where do the couches go?
Yeah, where...
And the games?
Well, we'll make it plausible so the couch and the grill and the keg won't fit.
Good idea.
Are you sure they can find a way?
The dumpster's going to be there, that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, that's where you'll put the grill and the couch and the dumpsters after I've come through.
Okay. Okay, so the exterior, and the entrance into the building is from the outside?
Correct.
It's two stairs here, or four rather?
Each unit has its own parking entrance.
And this one will take you from upstairs to first floor to the second floor?
Up to the bedrooms.
Okay, so basically, they, to get out of the car, they have to go to the stairs outside?
Yes.
Okay. And this sprinkled, if I remember correctly?
It is not.
It is not?
It has, I can go retrieve all the Ohio State Code. It has a two-hour firewall that divides the two separate units, then with one-hour firewalls everywhere else.
Okay. Just wondering.
One other question. Is there an alternate escape route from the second, from the second level, from the bedroom level, if the stairs are on fire?
Okay.
How do you get out of the bedroom?
Climb onto a porch roof with the stairs coming down from the porch roof, with the stairs from exterior there.
Okay, there are, there is, there are stairs. I mean, how do you get from the porch roof down to the stairs?
It would be the fire, the traditional fire escape route where you have an exterior ladder.
Oh, okay.
It is special to the building.
Okay, as long as there is some way of getting out of that.
It would be essentially from a window area to the roof area to the ground.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry, it's not drawn at...
It isn't.
...an easy way to do a fire escape here on the exterior, or probably on the interior there, so it's not as visible, because they are metal ladders. So, they're on the interior stairs, or the back.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we're not used to sitting here. We usually rest, so we don't quite know what to do up here.
We'll figure it out.
We don't know what we're doing up here. It's too high.
Yeah, I think I don't have any other questions about the range.
Okay, so looking at the procedure for approval, is that 4104?
Yeah.
We've got the copies. I have to assume that Service Safety Director has determined that this application is complete? Has that been determined, or? It looks pretty complete right now, but it's up to the Service Safety Director.
Yeah, we have to have that first. We have to have that statement from her first, along with the checklist that she used.
We don't have a checklist. We've got this from the code, various lettering.
That was one of the things that we talked about when this was passed, that it has to come to us with a checklist from the Service Safety Director.
And as I say, right now, Beverly's acting as interim.
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you have any questions on it, Steve, or any comments on this?
No, just kind of to reiterate the point on the process, normally these won't come to you first. Section B in 4104 talks about submitting to the Service Safety Director, who looks at a checklist, and then forwards, if necessary, the packet of information to other appropriate agencies and department heads for review. And that starts a 15-day time clock for response from different departments or agencies requested by the Service Safety Director for input. At that point, that's when the process says that it will come back to the Planning Commission. And then there's a second 15-day clock that starts to tick in which the Planning Commission has to take action. So, in a way, I've kind of jumped the gun here.
Yeah.
But it being the first case, and not really having a checklist, but having it laid out, as Mr. Thomason said, we've discussed how she should present it, and what would the checklist be like, and I recommend that she simply follow the code, which seems to have worked out very well, and probably will be the template for the checklist. You know, if you saw something in there that you thought you would recommend to Ms. Henderson that's additional information that's required, and she would know to do that, because it says in writing you'll notify the applicant of any additional things, I think it'd be great if you had a motion that you considered this a complete package, that way Ms. Henderson wouldn't necessarily have to go, you know, back through and say, "Steve, what's this? Ms. Thompson, what's this?" She would know then to go ahead and stamp it complete, and then be able to say, you know, "Andy Stone, Street Director, can you review this?" Or, "Steve Pearson, Zoning Administrator, is there some input that I need from you?" That way, too, you'll have information, for example, for street, from Water and Sewer Department, is there sufficient water there, or sewer capacity? You know, this is, really, this is a nice, easy one to start with, to be honest with you, to kind of get up and running with. A lot of other projects are going to be much more complicated. This one, I think, is very straightforward.
That does bring up one other, one other question. The Mill Street, Elliott Street area has been traditionally, at least since the 80s, a problem area for water, sewer, but particularly for sewer. Has that been corrected?
That I don't know. But that's a good example, if you, you know, for example, maybe you don't want to, you know, you want to get something to, Service Safety Director Henderson, that says, "Could you have Nick Carr, Water and Sewer Director, give us, answer this question for us? Is there sufficient sewage capacity there? Are there any problems that need to be addressed?"
We had flat sewers on Elliott Street for a long time.
They do lay very flat in that area.
People from Elliott Street were regular visitors to the council.
I know a couple of years ago, they did the storm sewer down there. I don't know if they did the sand, because I know they were tearing up Elliott and Mill one.
There was a connection between the two that was really bad, and then there was a slope that added to the problem. When I was on council, we asked about it, it was always, "Oh, that's too big a job to get down."
There has been significant storm sewer work in the area, that the university also cooperated in. The first stretch down Stewart Street, and then the sewer, the storm sewer kind of took an angle through St. Paul's Church parking lot over behind Knights of Columbus, and then turned and went straight down Elliott Street. So, that was a combination city/university project several years ago, but no, to my knowledge, no significant sanitary sewer work has been done in that area. Storm sewer has.
You know, this is not a tremendously, a tremendous increase in the number of people that are going to be on Mill Street, but if we're going to be concentrating on developing the Mill Street area into a higher-density area, I think it's something we need to begin looking at. We can't ask the council to look at it, but that's a problem.
In Section C of 4104, it says that the Service Safety Director and any other city officials shall review the plans, and the Service Safety Director... and any other city officials shall review the plans, and the Service Safety Director, well, it talks about getting input from other departments, see if I can find it exactly.
Yeah, Service Safety Director and other city officials to review the plans and compliance minimum.
Right, so, maybe you do need a statement in writing, and that's why that 15-day clock, I think, starts up, because then Mr. Carr would have 15 days to review the plans and respond to your question about sanitary sewer. And that will give the city, too, a good indication of where you might need to identify infrastructure needs. Going through this process, if you see repeatedly, you know, sanitary issues in a certain part of town, then you'll know that some concentration other than site plan review might be necessary in that area. So it's a good planning tool also, for, you know, everybody that's already there.
I hate to, to be one way about this, but since this is the very beginning of our Title 41 reviews, I really would like to see a standard checklist come from the Safety Service Director, that we could all, something that follows this ordinance and that we could all agree on, so that it would be easier for us to go down the list, too, as well as for the Safety Service Director.
Exactly, a lot of applicants may not be as thorough and efficient as this application is. And there, there's a lot of things to have to make sure that have been submitted.
Yeah, this is, this would be a big help as a model for that, but, but I think we need fairly quickly to develop one, because there are going to be other, other sites going.
I have to agree with that. It sounds like, really, that this is not really formally introduced now until Beverly signs off on this, if I'm understanding that correctly, I mean, and you're asking us to approve this even though we're not, we haven't started it out, or are you asking?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, this is just kind of a preliminary presentation, seeing if there's any additional information you might recommend to the Service Safety Director that's necessary. And it sounds like maybe some input on sanitary is about all that I've heard so far.
I would also, Peg brought up the, the fire escape aspect of it, and that would be something to, it didn't occur to me till she brought it up, that's something to think about, too, so.
One comment.
Again, coming through, we'll end up at the P. Tronxel's area anyway, but.
Well, it has in here these standards for review, and of course, they're listed, but, for example, under fire protection, it talks about hydrants in the vehicles and that's, but it doesn't talk, say anything about fire escapes, which is.
Right.
Which is what Peg brought up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's in the, in the rental housing regulations. Surely, there's something about fire escapes and more than one exit?
Yes, I know.
Yeah, the more than one exit is an emergency escape window that's required by the Housing Code. And you can, according to the Housing Code, believe it or not, you can jump 14 feet from the sill of that window to an adjacent surface. So there is no requirement for exterior. It just says.
I'm not sure, I want to try.
The distance from a window sill that's used for emergency escape purposes can be up to 14 feet away.
That's assuming you can hang out of it and then just drop the rest, or that's about.
It could be that, you know, if you were five feet tall, that would be a nine-foot drop, or less, because your arms would be stretched out, but that's all the Housing Code says. It doesn't talk about exterior fire escapes. Now, one thing, though, to give you a little better comfort level on this, because there are four units in the building, these plans will have to be submitted to the Ohio Department of Construction, Compliance Division of the Department of Commerce, and they'll be reviewed for compliance with the State Building Code, which also includes consideration that mirrors the Ohio Fire Code. For example, there's fire separation between the units, and you'll know that for sure, and the state will review that, and it'll be part of the plan submittal. If any kind of special alarm system, or sprinkler system, or anything like that is required by the State Building Code, it, that will be noted and have to be corrected, if not submitted properly. So these plans will meet the Ohio Building Code requirements for one of those components being fire safety. So there'll be a state review, just to, and if, you know, for example, if the state would require a fire escape, well, then the plans would have to include a fire escape. If the state plans, or the State Building Code does not require it, then it would be, it would be optional.
Okay, and just in that point of the 14-foot, I'm looking at the picture, the diagram of the east, exterior elevation east, and it shows flood, it shows the elevation, 100-year flood grade. The grade is listed at, for the parking garage is at 637. The second floor is listed at 656. So that looks about, I did my calculation, around about 19 feet. So this is, this is the second-story windows we're looking at right there. So it's, it's on the borderline, or else, outside, depending on how you look at it.
Well, but if you go on the roof, the overhang is going to be lower than you, you shouldn't go to the edge and hang over.
And that would apply to.
By the edge of the roof?
Well, if you want to get out, you'll hang on to something, I think.
And that would apply to two of the four bedrooms, the two interior bedrooms. If we're looking at second story, these two bedrooms right here.
Don't have a.
And these two right here.
Don't have anything to hang on to.
Oh, the next, the next window sill, I guess. Just, I know we're nitpicking in that sense, but, but I, I mean, I think this is great, and a great, you know, but then that's why we're discussing, I guess, we're going to figure out what things are falling through the cracks or need to be at least talked about.
Well, not to be redundant, but as Mr. Pearson said, anything that is required in the State Code will be in the plans, will be taken care of. With safety, of course, the utmost concern, absolutely. I don't want anybody to break any legs or anything, so.
We all get to go down and try it and see if it'll work.
I'll pass it.
If it doesn't work, then, you know, do something, you don't want to do that.
It'd be a field trip.
Okay.
Anything else? So really, the next thing is for this, the Service Safety Director to get a checklist?
Get a checklist, mhm.
Review this, see if it's complete, and then pass it along to the other.
Other people.
And then they'll come back. It looks like.
With the, you want this request to have, make sure that something's done about this, that Nick Carr looks at the sewage, this question. Okay, I don't think we need to vote on that, we just wanted, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a lot.
Very nicely done.
Thank you.
Ah, I lost my thing here. Here it is. We don't have any other cases now, we have communications. We have a communication from Athens Station here, and we have one from Portside Pizza, too. The Athens Station is, concerns a request for change of zoning from M to R3. And this is for changing the restaurant over to apartments and building another apartment, right?
Keeping that zoning of M is not terribly desirable, anyway.
Well, we've been trying to change a lot of those Ms. for a long time. Try it again.
Long-term basis, it doesn't make any difference.
No, because it's certainly not going to be turned over into manufacturing down there. Did we, let's see, here's a communication from Steve about, this is all patched together. Did, did we get any idea about whether this is a planned unit development? Is, is this part of the other thing? Does it have to be on one of its own, or what is it? Have you done that, Patrick?
No, I don't know if that question ever, I know it was discussed in a previous meeting, I don't know if it was formally presented to Mr. Hunter or not.
I don't know.
Patrick, you showed up, is there?
It hasn't been presented to me at all, no.
Okay, well, he needs to have a, a copy of this memo, anyway. The question was that this was a, a planned unit development, but the land where they want to do the building is, was that part of the original thing, and the thing is, it was, wasn't, because it was a railroad, still went through, it was railroad land, and it wasn't part of it, or was it a part of it? So does this have to be a completely separate putt, or is it connected onto the other one, or what is all this? Okay.
Okay, so, I see this was sent to Tracy Meek.
This is a.
So this is asking it to be forwarded, so, did you get a copy of this?
It's dated December 28th.
Probably not.
But if it's in the office, then it needs to be brought to my attention, I'll take a look at that.
Okay. Again, the question has arisen whether it's part of PUD package, and does it have to, and it's citing several sections of the code in terms of the zoning.
All right.
Kind of in defense of the process here, so you understand what happens. A lot of times, former Law Director Hunter had me communicate to a particularly assigned city prosecutor if I had a question about something. Now, the question about can this be part of the Station Street PUD, or is it a separate standalone PUD, was a question that the Planning Commission posed quite a while back. And the reason that I brought it up again was because I didn't know if it had been answered, and I wanted to use the same procedure that we had, so I didn't have any way to, I was working through Tracy, who was my contact, and I just wanted her to know, to let Mr. Lang, you know, be aware that the situation has previously existed, and probably not an answer yet to the question, not to put on a whole lot of pressure, you know, it wasn't anything like that at all. What I was trying to do was continue with an established process and point out some, a question that still needs to be. Now, you know, a re, a rezoning, I don't know if that, in a way, that would imply that it's a separate, you know, entity that you're dealing with, it's not part of the station project. It might be one perspective on it. In any case, if it does stand alone, it's going to need a minimum of variance for lot area, because it's less than, than two acres. And then, of course, I'll, you know, have to look at the parking, and the landscaping, and the setbacks, and those kinds of things, when, you know, there's actually a, a site plan submitted.
Well, the question of the rezoning, though, does it, it doesn't really depend upon the putt, does it? I mean, it's still manufacturing down there, and we've, in the past, been going through the zoning map and picking out the manufacturing and trying to change them. I mean, just because it doesn't make any sense to have it in there, because it's all surrounded by that, so I don't, I don't know if that hangs on the, whether or not it's part of the old putt, or it's a new one, or I didn't think, I don't see that that has any really bearing, if we wanted to change, try to change, whatever's M down there to R3.
Well, in times past, the underlying zoning was important, because it did establish the uses permitted in that area apart from the PUD. The current regulations on planned unit development just say that when a planned unit development is approved, PUD is kind of the, well, actually, it says, "When a final plan is approved, the official zoning map shall be annotated for the land area affected, and the district name shall be appropriately amended." So, I don't know if P.
Where does that take?
To be honest, I'm not sure if PUD is an overlay zone now, and it doesn't matter what's underneath, but what is important, if a PUD is superimposed over top of base zone, what happens if there's some proposal later on that goes back to base zoning? So I think it is very important, no matter what the process is, to establish what might be a use in that area apart from that planned unit development that might be approved on the land at that time. So, that's the only reason I brought it, brought it up. It could appear that PUD kind of supersedes everything, it may not. The rezoning wouldn't hurt if it was done, and it would establish what could be done there later on. For example, if a restaurant wanted to go back in an R3 zone later on, that's a conditionally permitted use in an R3 zone, so that would have to go to the zoning board. A B1, B2, or B3 base zone would allow a restaurant to go back in without zoning board review, just as a principally permitted use.
Question, the Rest of Depot is zoned what right now?
My understanding is the Station Street planned unit development is zoned M manufacturing.
Yeah, I don't think that was changed.
No, just wanted, but, I mean, this is a request not to go to business, I mean, we, we don't necessarily have to take it to R3. I mean, I think we tried down along in there sometime, and some of those other ones to bring it into business, one of the business zones.
We need to look at the zoning map and see, too.
I don't remember quite what, because we had several of them at the same time, and they were.
I can provide you with a map that shows all the zones in that area, and there are quite a few. There's a neighborhood business zone, very close, there's an R2 duplex, R1 single-family, an R3, and a huge manufacturing zone. So I can provide you with a, a map of the existing zoning, and, you know, that way you could make a determination if you thought R3 was appropriate, or B3, or.
I wasn't really paying attention when the Station Depot came in, it wasn't something I was involved in. That was rezoned, I think, is that the case, it was rezoned one time, and then by referendum, rezoned back? Is that the history of it?
My understanding, and I don't, I wasn't here either at the time, but my understanding was that one of the recommendations was that the area, with the planned unit development, be rezoned to R3, and I believe council approved that rezoning. And then, there was, it was placed on the ballot by initiative, and the decision, the council was overturned, so the manufacturing zone stayed. It didn't go to R3.
Even though the apartments were already, were built?
Right. And then, kind of looking back through the records that I've seen, historically, the, the record kind of, it becomes faint there, how, how was it constructed within M zone? It's obviously there, it must not have been that great a problem, or it wouldn't have been constructed, but it's still zoned M, manufacturing.
Okay.
My recollection is that it, that somebody decided that PUD overruled the fact that it was an M zone, and that there was a lot of pressure from PUD to get that built. And, so I don't remember whether it was Mr. Hunter who said that the PUD superseded the M zone, but at any rate, the general feeling was that it was okay to have the PUD in the M zone, because the PUD governed what could be there, rather than the zone.
The zoning code now specifically says PUDs are permitted as early as an R1 zone, as a principally permitted use, if you go through a process. So that's, that's why I wanted to make sure that, and it sounds like maybe that if it is rezoned, it might not be rezoned R3, it'd be, you know, whatever the Planning Commission might recommend. I can provide you with a map of the zones in the area, and there's a process that the zoning code describes for map amendment. Amendments can be initiated by the Planning Commission, the city council, or by an applicant. So I'll go ahead and just proceed as if the, how do you want me to do that, I guess? You want the applicant to turn in the information, or do you want me to go ahead and pursue it on behalf of the Planning Commission as the initiator of the rezoning?
I don't, we look at it on, on part of the Planning Commission because of the fact that we have been, over the years.
Looking at manufacturing.
Looking at zoning and trying to, and particularly, trying to get the manufacturing zones out of the city. Regardless of what applicants want to do there. It's, it's more, more depends on what's surrounding it, it seems to me, than what somebody wants to do there.
The zoning code lists several items in 230904, and so what I'll do is I'll provide that information to you. I'll go down that list as if it were a checklist, and I'll just go ahead and submit everything to you.
I was not involved in it at all when all this whole thing started, so I don't know any of the reasoning behind it, or all the things that happened, because I was just not involved.
No, I was on city council, it wasn't all that clear on that.
But, but realize, we're, the discussion here is, do we change it to a, an R3, even though the rest of it, as a PUD, is manufacturing already? Does that mean it's not an important point?
Well, it's there, it's the, the, Athens Station is asking us to do that. In the past, the ones, we weren't, we didn't change all those, I think we did different things in these Ms., the ones that we were changed, depending on the surrounding, what was surrounding, and what the rest of the area was. So just to look at this now and say, well, that can be R3, we'd have to go through and look at the map as he wants us to see what's there, and that's, because I think we, we didn't change all of them to the same zone, I don't believe.
No, we didn't, and we, and we did send recommendations for zoning changes to the council and a number of them. council, and then we're just...
Never done.
No way they deal with it.
So, yeah. Okay. That's all due. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Margaret?
No, no, unless you have a question.
Okay. But you understand what we're doing. All right. I lost my things here. The, sure. The patio for the courtside pizza, we had a, a, we had correspondence about that or communication, and, hmm, they want to expand the space of the patio. And we'll take up some of the parking space, right? He wants to amend his PUD again, what I'm reading here?
I think so.
Well, I don't know. I don't know how many spaces, I forget how many spaces are down there and how that thing will, have to look back and see how that whole thing was divided up, the parking and all those buildings and the parking, they had parking up on Carpenter Street. Doesn't some of that apply to them, too?
If I might, I can maybe fill in some of the gaps.
Yeah, okay.
A year or two ago, Mr. Cornwell came back and wanted to modify his original planned unit development, the construction of three buildings at, I think it's 85A, B, and C, North Court Street. The first floor of each of those buildings was to be reserved for commercial use. However, over a period of years, Mr. Cornwell was not able to obtain commercial tenants for the first floor of buildings B and C. He came back to Planning Commission to amend his planned unit development, and you recommended approval to council, and they approved the residential use of the first floor in those buildings two and three. My review of the original case at the time indicated that there were seven parking spaces required for courtside pizza. And so, seven parking spaces, if you go up there and look, I think they identify some of the parking is going with the courtside, with courtside pizza. More recently, the Planning Commission has recommended B2D is the zone for that area, and the parking garage counts as your commercial parking requirement. If that whole process would have come to culmination, then they would have had seven additional parking spots that they might be able to expand outdoor eating and drinking into. But that hasn't happened yet. So, there's, you know, they still have to keep those seven parking spaces for courtside pizza, and they can't, they can't move that outdoor eating and drinking area out into the parking lot because you can't, you know, just as in a couple other cases, similar things have wanted to be done. When you encroach on your parking, that's something you can't do without, you know, some compensation or some mitigation for parking. So, that's kind of what that's all alluding to.
They do rent, they do rent the parking lot from the Historical Society, you know, except for not every night, but almost every night from five to...
This is courtside pizza, doesn't it? Is it almost...
And of course, they try to get in there other times, too, but that's, I don't know, they might bring that up because they do, I don't know if they renewed the contract, but they've had a year's contract there with, I think we have a couple, maybe Sunday and Monday we have it, the parking lot, but they rent it the rest of the time, over my objection, of course, but they still do it.
I would think that would, again, that wouldn't go to the Board of Zone Appeals, I don't think. For offsite parking or non-owner deed restricted parking, it would have to come back as an amendment to the planned unit development.
And there's the one bill, you know, the ones that, there's, well, I guess there are two lots actually in between those two.
Is there any, I want to say, is there any similarity between this and the Bronies outside business? Because I'm thinking about that location, that if there's, if noise is a problem, the more outside space you develop, you allocate to eating and drinking.
Yeah, right now, the zoning code doesn't require any distance separations between outdoor eating and drinking areas and zones with other uses. There is this distance separation just from the physical facility itself from other zones, and in this particular case, the R1 zone, it's immediately adjacent to the north. But it doesn't, the zoning code doesn't specifically talk about indoor or outdoor right now. Noise is something separate, that's not in the zoning code, it's in a different section of the code, it's enforced by the police department. So, you know, that might be a section even where the code might need to be examined for outdoor eating and drinking areas and, you know, to see if there needs to be an additional separation between...
Is courtside pizza served beer?
Yeah, it's a full bar.
This patio faces south, so it'd be the opposite direction probably.
There's a building in between, I mean, there, there, and it's, sometimes they're noisy, but it's, it's got buildings all around it except that one side, and it's really, and the buildings go up fairly high, too, so that...
But it funnels it into the museum.
Yeah, it funnels it.
Yeah, it blasts the noise at the museum.
But it, I don't know, I don't hear, of, because I live up around there, I don't hear Bronies where I live, it doesn't come that way, it just goes straight up. And I don't, I've never heard anybody complain about the courtside part there because it really is closed in, and I don't see how, I mean, I don't think the sound could really get through very far on that.
It's surrounded on three sides by essentially a three-story building.
Yeah.
And the open side faces south and back toward the downtown area.
Yeah, it goes up against Cornwell's.
The only thing you might hear would be a, an echo or a bounce off the side of the Historical Society coming back.
It's still tall buildings, it might get...
I guess we could do an experiment, we could get a bunch of people to yell Bronies on one side, others yell courtside on the other side.
Depends on who's louder on the end.
In some respects, it's similar, in other respects, it's very dissimilar.
But after this point, the main issue is the parking.
Right. And it may even be that, I mean, this might be something for you to think about, too. Even if the zone is changed and the parking garage is sufficient to reduce the number of parking spots, would it still be an amendment to the planned unit development that would have to come back to the Planning Commission? I'm just, I'm trying to get as many ideas out here ahead of time as I can.
So, there's a couple issues here. One is the rezoning of that North Court again. I'm going to send a memo to New Council. See what they say. I'm not even going to predict that.
Wait till I'm not on it because I think that'll be the fifth time that would come, or fourth, it's a fourth or fifth time. You know, work better with somebody else.
And then the question comes to whether this, even if that would occur, what about the, the amendment of a PUD?
Well, that's a question. If you, if you're under one set of rules for a PUD and then those, then over the years it's changed, what do you do? Do you have to stay by your original ones, or does it change every time somebody decides to change something? We have to ask the law director that.
There we go. They'll write it down right there.
Make a list here. Okay, well, we don't need to do anything about that right at the moment, do we?
More homework.
It's more homework, yes. See who makes the most noise down there. I'll check them out. Of course, it's cold out now. The whole, that it is, the whole place is noisy when it's warm out because they open all the doors. The pizza place kind of faces onto, where the, you just get pizza faces on Court Street, but the bar faces onto the parking lot, onto Cornwell. Yeah, it's a, it's a bar, and they open all the doors, and then they go out in the patio, and then you can hear the noise, but I don't think you can hear it on the other side.
Big, massive buildings.
Yeah.
And it goes up the hill.
Yeah, yeah. But that side, it can be very noisy because they'll, well, like at Homecoming and stuff, or if it's a Saturday and we are open on Saturday in the Historical Society, it can be very noisy at 10 o'clock in the morning, so.
Okay.
But that's not every day. Okay. Do we, our announcements and other business, our next meeting is scheduled for January 17th at 2:30.
And if I understand, you're still on the Planning Commission for that?
Well, if you people have to decide when my term expires, if you haven't appointed anybody, I have to stay so that you'll have enough people, but then, I mean, you know...
Okay. Again, we're seeing two different dates, that's why I'm having a 15, 20, 30.
Well, I know, so you decide. Patrick, you decide.
Stay is fine, is fine.
I thought it might expire.
I'm sorry, that really...
I thought my term expired on the 15th, which means the 17th I would not be in the meeting, but then they tell me, no, it's the 30th, and so I should come to the next meeting, but until such time as another person is appointed and all that, then you stay until that person comes, and so we assume that you will have time in the middle here to do that. So, I shall come to the next meeting, and I will want my residuals determined by those fellows on TV on there.
That's my understanding as well, by the way. The question I also had is, is there a set of procedures and policies and bylaws for running the Planning Commission?
I was told when I came on here that, that there were procedures, that the commission writes their own procedures and determines how they're going to operate. I had never seen them. Have you ever seen them?
Doesn't sound like we need some, is that what you're telling us?
Well...
Are there, are there small clauses saying party hats required?
Party hats, no, no, just their question of, I think, and I, I don't know, the first meeting I ever came to, I walked in and I sat down and they said, "You're the chair."
Okay.
If that's a procedure, that's what they did. Now, that was a long time ago, and I think, I think that the group chooses their, they vote for somebody.
We elected you.
I know, but I walked in the door and I didn't know what, who was here.
That's because you were, that's because you were a little bit late.
But I was told that there, someplace along the line, when all of these things were determined, but I can remember, no, I guess that was the Board of Zoning Appeals I went before years ago, that in fact, that by state law, that's what we do, we set up our own procedures, and all I know is that, that we mainly follow Robert's Rules of Order. And I don't know how they determine how to vote, as I said, if you came in the door late, then you're the chair, so.
Just asking.
I mean, we've had things like, we have how many votes you have to have to, to approve something, or we also had, can we limit the, the length of time that people can speak, and some procedural things like that, that, that I've never seen written down, but I was always told, well, this is what we do, or... So, it's possible that you might want to read some...
It's oral tradition.
Oral tradition.
The, the state enabling legislation, I believe, is in seven, chapter 711 of the Higher Revised Code, and it talks about the authority to establish planning commissions. That's a section that also includes your responsibility to go out three miles beyond town also for a planning purposes. So, that, that section's either 711 or 713 of the Higher Revised Code, lays down some basic guidelines for the establishment of planning commissions and how they'll operate.
Might be kind of nice if we had a copy of that.
I can do that for you, too.
I have reviewed it a while back, and I, there's nothing really in terms of procedures. There's composition is there.
Yeah.
And the powers, but, again, on zoning board appeals, they have a procedure, how they follow through, and when they review the bylaws or procedures. That's, that's really why I was asking, if there's anything.
I was told that there was, but I've never seen it.
I'll research the, the records that I have of the Planning Commission over at the Code Office and see if I can find anything.
I mean, I can't give you any, I mean, any hint on any of it, so where, what time or anything, because, I mean, you all were on it before I came, so you would know.
No, I just did what I was told.
Okay. One of the considerations...
Go ahead.
One of the considerations was trying to switch the time to something, a different time, and that's what I was wanting to bring up. 2:30, I know for sunny, many citizens who were, you know, they, they can't just skip out for lunch because it's too far away from lunch, it's too early to leave home, leave work early. And I, I know, you know, the zoning boards at night.
Yeah.
And that would be one consideration, or noon would be another consideration. That's something I just bring up for convenience of our citizens.
Well, when I came, that's, they told me to come at 2:30, and I don't know who decided it would be 2:30. And then occasionally, we have had it at night when there are things that a lot of people, an awful lot of people are interested in, and a couple of times, we tried some other things, we tried it in the evening, too, but nobody showed up. You know, and contrary to fact, I do work, and I'm, you know, we are not all retired, elderly who sit around and do nothing all day, so. Elderly, I might be, but I sit around and do something else. But as I said, it was just, that's what every, that's what they did, so we...
Well, that's why I mentioned, you know, as a full-time employee now, it's not even be able to need to do between, you know, eight and five, but this is one of the things I've always heard, is that it is, and when I, you know, when I was working another job, skip out at 2:30 on a workday could be a...
Oh, I understand that, it's just that was, that's the tradition, it was, and I think, I can remember years, it was always in the afternoon, as far as I know. I always thought that it was probably in deference to the Service Safety Director and to the mayor and to code enforcement and however it was set up in those times, because your time, you really are expected to go to an awful lot of things at nighttime, and it just seemed like that, that a lot of this is not, a lot of what the Planning Commission does is not something that all the citizens are going to get, that we have to follow state law, we have to follow the law, we have to follow this thing, and you, you can only do so much, and so it isn't always something that somebody wants to come and participate in. I think that was the reasoning behind, that list, that's what I thought it was.
Well, and often we have gotten comments by letter from people who couldn't be here. But even back in the, back in the day, I was on council, it always mattered.
Thanks for your consideration, but I'll be at the Tree Commission meeting tonight and the zoning board meeting Tuesday night.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I always thought...
Nighttime meetings, I'm at those all the time.
I always thought it was just a, at least it would be one thing where you wouldn't have to go at night, and if you needed something, you could run down, well, not since you moved out of the country there with your offices, you can run down and get the things we needed and everything. I think you're in the country out there on West End.
Well, you could, for example, too, Mr. Konashigie and I are both members, city reps to the Regional Planning Commission, and we meet at 8:00 in the morning, blurry-eyed, but they have coffee and donuts, and we have a meeting at 8:00 AM, so. And a lot of times, people do come, you know, and testify very quickly and then leave for their, they're not that late to work.
Go meet at 7:00.
But they're meeting, I go to meetings, everything from 7:30, 8:00 at night to 8:00 in the morning.
It's just a consideration, that's why I was asking about the rules.
Yeah, well, I, people, over the years, we have had people request it, and then we do with a letter, we, our procedure is if they send it a letter, we, it's read into the, to the, to the meeting, to the minutes, and then we talk about it and that sort of thing, so. Okay, now, this number five, opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Anybody want to speak? You're all looking at me, nobody wants to speak. Minutes, where are the minutes? We have minutes. The meeting of Thursday, December 6th. Okay. Well, that was, mm-hmm. Okay, are there any other questions? If not... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those are, now, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
We'll adjourn.
Second.
You don't even have to do that.